This conference will now be recorded.
All right, well, good morning to everybody. I'd like you to welcome me to our August 10th, 2023 Commissioners Meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners' Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241.0153B2. So I'll call this meeting to order. And JR, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15:00 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be polled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
No, no report. Thank you.
Okay, Patsy?
I attended the Water Board, but JR, I'll let him speak on it because he's the main person for it and the convention of tourism, but there isn't anything to report.
Okay. I have no report. JR?
Yeah, I went to, did the Zoom meeting on the Water Board, and they were trying to come up with this idea of retiring water rights if they haven't been used, which I'm not sure many people are going to really buy into that. But we'll see how it works out. And I also videoed in with the state public lands, but there wasn't nothing much new on that.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Attended the Hospital Board, replaced the agenda and the financials that could be given out to the Commissioners if they needed. They did give the results of the survey that they put out. It was positive for the amount that participated, so it's all in there.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. So we did have a cybersecurity evaluation done by Pool PAC, and they came through the courthouse this week and tried to check anywhere that we could be breached, or our security could be breached and people could access us from the outside. We did find a few things that need to be fixed, so there'll be some changes that'll be coming. You guys will probably see like a dual checks to access email and things like that, so multiple passwords. We'll be adding some additional security measures to make sure that it's a little tougher for people to get in. But overall, it was better than the last one they did. A lot of the old ports and accesses that people had in the past were fixed. So the other thing is, as you guys just seen, the lights flicker, the power company has had some trouble in some of the town. They had a scheduled outage last night.
It just stopped. It might not be recording.
Okay, you bet.
I turned the computer.
No worries. No worries. Didn't do anything to our side.
It bumped, but we're still going.
We're good to go?
Okay, perfect. So the power outage that was scheduled last night, they are trying to figure out what is going on. They replaced some stuff. They're bringing in a substation to, a mobile substation, so they can take everything offline and see if it's something within their substation. So there'll be some more outages that are coming. Hopefully we have some more notice so we can notify some of the people that may be on oxygen or need power and things like that. Commissioner Ancho called yesterday, and we, that is something that we weren't aware of. And the power company has supposedly called every home that was going to be out. How they, how their contact lists and things like that are, I have no idea. The other thing, we will put it in, we'll try to put it in our newsletter as a contact number for anybody that loses any computers or has any damage that's from these power bumps and surges. They can file a claim with NV Energy. They won't pay for the labor to reinstall, but oftentimes they'll pay for whatever equipment was damaged. So we'll put something in, out in the newsletter so people can contact them on things like that. We did hire an EMS director who will be starting on the 21st, so we're excited about that. We can continue down the road with, you know, trying to make some progress with our EMS coming over. And then on the 15th at 10:00 AM, we have a ribbon cutting over here for the Renown Fitness Center that we put in at the rec center. If any of the Commissioners would like to speak at that, we would love to have you there and speak at it. We approached Commissioner Sparks, being the chair, if he would say some sort of statement. Not sure if we have 100% commitment yet, but if we can, that would be great. Any of the elected officials that would like to come over there, that will be at 10:00 AM on the 15th. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of August 10th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of June 8th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of June 22nd, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of June 26th, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of July 13th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change requests.
So we are amending the agenda, right? So we need to pull number one. And I will make a motion that we approve the balance of the minutes I have received and...
We're not amending it.
Oh, we're just pulling it? Okay. Then I make a motion, we approve all of them?
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move into item one, Commissioners. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills, we'll need to poll check number 220535, 220442, 220701, 220599, and check number 220531. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, approve the remainder of the bills.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll take up check number 220531. That's a check for Patsy. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We'll have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I abstain for the personal reasons. Thank you. I make a motion, we approve check number 220321, 220535, 220701, and 220599.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain. They're made to my employer. Okay, we'll move to item two, Commissioners. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the amendments and extension of the Mountain View Golf Club or Club House lease agreement between Lander County and Overtime Sports Bar and Grill LLC. Anybody have any questions on this item?
Uh-uh.
I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments and extension of the Mountain View Clubhouse lease agreement between Lander County and Overtime Sports Bar and Grill LLC.
I'll second it.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Mike seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're going to jump to number 22. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the bid award to the 2023 Preventive Maintenance Project PWP-LA-2023-447, Sierra Nevada Construction Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,864,007. Tony?
Good morning, Commission. This is for cake cell, yeah, cake cell project we have going on. We did the crack cell last, or the beginning of this year, so now we're just coming in, caking over, helping serve the roads out there.
Okay. And we only have the one person who...
Yep, just one bidder this year, so.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the action item for the 2023 Preventive Maintenance Project PWP-LA-2023-447 in the amount of $1,864,007 and no cents.
I'll figure it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item three. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the interlocal contract between the State and Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Services Program, and Lander County. So I think this is a contract we approve. Is it every... Two years, every three years? So two years, effective from July 2023 to June 30th, 2025. So Brandy had some patients this morning that she had to see. She will be here a little bit later. If you guys would like to come back to this for explanation.
You guys good with it?
I just had one question, and that was on, in the contract actually, under 1.10 Community Health Nursing.
What page is it, Miss Patsy?
I don't have the page number. It's under the scope of work.
Okay, right there. 1. what?
1.10 Community Health Nursing. Under that, it says travel. CHS will cover the cost of travel by CHS employees and county employees to meet the operational needs. Okay? And then later, it says on the very next page, the cost of travel by CHS employees and county employees to meet county operational needs will be the responsibility of the county.
Yeah, exactly. I see what you're saying.
I'm missing something somewhere.
We've had this item on before. You guys have to table it because you had a lot of questions, but we asked people to be present for it, but...
Okay, so I think we'll just, we're going to skip over this item until Brandy gets here, and then we can... You guys good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so we'll move on to item four.
Yep.
Discussion and updates on questions and concerns regarding the advisory boards in Lander County. So, Commission, this is for any advisory boards. If we have anybody that's here to present on any of them, or any questions anywhere that we could better ourselves in helping them, or where we've been helping them may be good. So if there's anybody from an advisory board that wants to speak on it, we're here to listen. Yeah, I think this item, this is what we came up with our last meeting, was to try to open the door to more communication and transparency and giving opportunity for any advisory boards to speak on if we had any questions, concerns. So do we have any advisory board members that would like to speak? Okay?
I did get a comment from Worth Nelson. He wasn't available to make it in today, but he came in from the game board and said that, you know, if, I know that we appointed JR to attend them meetings, not as a representative, but just as a kind of an information gather. But he just asked if there was anything that came across our board that may affect them, if we could forward an email or stop into a meeting, either a Commissioner or myself, somebody, just to kind of update them, and then we could kind of collaborate a little bit more. That was his only, his only request. Otherwise, he felt like everything was going pretty good.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, any questions? Okay, so we'll just move on. Item five, Commissioners. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the Lander County Commissioners to retain their own legal counsel for County Commissioners Meeting. Okay, this was, Commissioner Ancho asked for this to be put on, so any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, that'd probably be best.
This particular issue came... This particular issue came up years ago, back 1980. The Attorney General's Office did an opinion on it to Tom Stringfield, who was at that time the District Attorney of Elko County. This was 1980. Now, it's true that there have been many amendments to, you know, the laws regarding the duties of District Attorneys since then, but they really haven't changed this particular aspect. I'd like to read from some excerpts from that Attorney General's Opinion. They start out saying, "Dear Mr. Stringfield, this is in response to your written request for an Attorney General's Opinion concerning the legal authority of the Elko County Commission to hire its own private legal counsel for the purpose of handling all the legal work of the County Commission, thereby precluding the use of the services of the elected Elko County District Attorney and his office for this purpose. According to your letter, the Elko County Commission has hired a private attorney as the Commission's continuing legal counsel since September of 1977." As an aside, again, this was 1980, so they'd been doing it for years. "For this service, private counsel has received compensation at the rate of $25 per hour, and some items of office equipment have been leased by the Commissioners for use in the private law office of their retained attorney." By the way, I think it was Wilson and Barrows. "The duties of the Elko County Commission's private legal counsel have included the following: attending meetings of the Elko County Commission, at which time both written and oral legal opinions have been rendered upon request, and..." Forgive me, but... "...two, making court appearances on behalf of the Elko County Commissioners and in the name of Elko County. Note, the nature of litigation handled by the Commission's retained counsel was not specified, though it has been assumed in this opinion that virtually all such matters are in the nature of civil proceedings in which Elko County has been named as a party and do not involve criminal prosecutions for public offenses or violations of criminal statutes. You have objected to the current arrangement between the Elko County Commissioners and their retained private legal counsel, and it is assumed in this opinion that your office is ready, willing, and able to perform the legal services now being provided to the Elko County Commission by their private attorney. Based on the foregoing, you have asked the following: Does the Elko County Commission have the legal authority under Nevada law to hire its own private legal counsel to provide continuing legal services to the Commission, including the rendering of legal advice and the controlling of litigation involving the County of Elko over the objection of the County's elected District Attorney who is ready, willing, and able to provide such services?" Now, I won't read the rest of it. I'll go skip to the conclusion. "The Elko County Commissioners do not have the legal authority under Nevada law to hire their own continuous private legal counsel over the objection of the Elko County District Attorney who is ready, willing, and able to render all the legal services required of him by Nevada statutes. The County Commissioners do have the authority to hire counsel other than the District Attorney for the purpose of litigating specific cases, though such arrangements should be made with the advice and consent of the District Attorney in order to foster a spirit of cooperation between county officials, which will necessarily tend to the good of the county." See Attorney General's Opinion 79, Nevada, July 26, 1919. So, and I mention all the way to the end the 1919, so that you know this is a continuing issue in the state, has been from probably statehood. I would also like to point out that we had, in the last legislature, that is during the regular session, AB 92, which was the corporate counsel bill, that I believe came up with support of NACO, but it was opposed by the District Attorneys Association. And as far as I know, every District Attorney in the state. We were on Zoom calls together regarding this bill, trying to get rid of it. But it was so clear that you cannot just hire whoever you want to do your legal work for you. You have to have the consent of the District Attorney in order to do that. There are reasons for it, and I think those are best summarized, again, by some letters that were in opposition to AB 92. The Nevada District Attorneys Association itself, with signatories from both Washoe and Clark Counties, had this letter. I will skip one paragraph because it has nothing to do with our current stuff. It has to do with child things. "The Nevada District Attorneys Association is in opposition to AB 92. For those of you who do not know, the Nevada District Attorneys Association is comprised of the 17 elected District Attorneys throughout Nevada. Jenny Noble is from the Washoe County DA's office, and I am from the Clark County DA's office. Together, we represent the Association during the 2023 legislative session. We write to you today to express our strong opposition to AB 92, currently set for hearing in front of the Senate Government Affairs Committee on Wednesday, April 19, 2023. It is sound policy that public officials, boards, and agencies be given legal advice that they need to hear, not legal advice that they want to hear. With that in mind, it is important to use a representation model that best leads to that outcome. Ensuring that a public attorney providing legal advice is accountable to a separately elected official provides a measure of independence to that attorney, thus better ensuring legally and ethically sound advice. This objectivity and independent judgment, free from the threat of reprisal, ensures that the advice is in the best interest of the county and its residents. The reasoning is simple. Officials better informed of the consequences of their proposed actions make better informed decisions. The model we now have is similar to the model used at the state level. The Attorney General, an independently elected official, provides legal advice and representation to the other agencies of the state executive branch. This model serves Nevadans by ensuring our governmental entities receive the frank legal advice that is vital to a client's ability to consider the risks and benefits of any proposed course of action. Last session, proponents of the county council model tried to alleviate concerns by stating that the legislation is, quote, "just enabling," end quote. Even though it is enabling legislation, AB 92 could be used as a hammer against DA's providing advice. If a county does not like the advice they are given, they can threaten to create the office of county counsel, thus causing a crack in the independence that we feel provides the best, most unbiased opinions." And I'll skip the next paragraph. "Then ethical concerns are often brought up in support of this proposal. As a general rule, there is no conflict with the District Attorney representing other officials or boards of county commissioners." That sentence is underlined. "Conflict occurs when the interests of the attorney and the interests of the client clash, and when that happens, the ethics rules require the attorney to notify the client and the client be given the opportunity to hire another attorney. There are already procedures in place to handle apparent or actual conflicts if they arise. In navigating conflicts, the DA's comply with the Nevada Rules of Professional Conduct, which includes special rules for prosecutors." Finally, AB 92 disenfranchises voters. Again, he underlines, AB 92 disenfranchises voters, by removing their ability to choose the attorney who will represent not just the Board of Commissioners, but the county agencies as well. This bill makes it possible for a board or manager to seek out an attorney who is more amenable to providing them cover for the actions they take rather than providing objective legal advice. It also increases the risk of hiring an attorney based on political favoritism. The position could get awarded to an attorney or a firm that politically supports the majority of the Board of Commissioners, or maybe someone who has a relationship with the county manager rather than a District Attorney who is directly elected by the people. The question you need to answer as a policy is what is the best model of representation for the citizens of this state? We submit to you, it's the current model. If there are problems with our current model of representation, we have not been informed of them. Nevertheless, our offices are more than willing to sit down with their respective counties to address those concerns. We are asking for the opportunity to work through those problems prior to the passing of this legislation. If you have any questions about this bill or any matter in front of you this session, please feel free to contact us at any time. Sincerely, John T. Jones, Jr., Clark County District Attorney's Office, Jennifer Noble, Washoe County District Attorney's Office."
So Bill, what you just read, that was concerning AB 92, correct?
92.
And then what you read first was, that was actual NRS?
That was the actual Attorney General's Opinion from 1980. That's opinion 80-37.
Okay, and there's been no change in the NRS from 19...
There have been changes, but they don't directly... Let me give you like an example of one major change. It was back when I was working for HI. You might remember that we didn't have, we would sometimes mention, very rarely, but we would sometimes mention, we only needed to be there for the bills. Okay, that has changed. I have to be here the whole meeting. Okay?
Okay.
And I don't know of anything, even if you were somehow empowered to give, have your own county counsel, far as I know, that would not change that law. So then you would have two attorneys advising you. And I don't know what you would do if you had them go against each other, but there has been that change. I have to be here the whole meeting unless I've got court.
Okay. And then on that, what you were reading, I mean, if I'm hearing it right, it wouldn't give the Commissioners the ability to hire anyone else's legal counsel?
Not against my objection.
So let me ask you this. So, because what I also heard in that is that you are the legal counsel for the whole county.
Correct.
Boards, districts, this and that.
Correct.
So why is it that the hospital has hired their own legal counsel?
Because the hospital itself is, is not really a part of the county. It has an independently elected hospital board. It's another political entity. It's another political entity.
Okay. Well, I didn't hear that verb is precisely in that, or did I miss it? Because my same question would be for the school district. But then that was all under what you're saying.
Again, a different political entity.
Okay. Did it specify anything that in the NRS about that? Or did you?
The NRS?
What you just read? Did it say anything about that? Because I just heard that you are the legal voice for the county, the commission, other boards, committees.
All right, let's be clear of what that entails. When I'm, say, I'm legal counsel for the county, it means the entity known as, let's say, the corporation known as Lander County, Nevada. Okay? The hospital board, that is, the hospital, is not Lander County, Nevada. It's the Battle Mountain General Hospital, and the Lander County Hospital Board, that's a separate, I forget exactly how it's designated, but it's a separate political entity, like Las Vegas is separate from Clark County. You know, or, for that matter, where we're at, I'll give you a separate legal entity that we often don't think about, Kingston. Kingston Town Board is separate. You guys don't have any direct control over them. And they, you know, I have to advise them as well. Those are covered under different statutes as to, that is, some of it's covered under the district attorney's duty to various agencies. And some agencies, it gets complicated, Brian, because?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me.
The city of Sparks.
You're the elected official for Lander County, right? So?
Yeah. I mean, I'll give you an example of how it can get kind of complicated with cities. The city of Sparks has an independently-elected city attorney, but over in Fernley, they don't. They have a, and also in, I'm trying to remember which one of the ones down south, not Henderson.
Boulder City?
Boulder City, thank you. Boulder City has an appointed city attorney. That is, the city council appoints.
But you have a county and a city. You have a mayor and a commissioner.
Right. And you have separate.
Commissioner or board.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you have separate entities. But the hospital board and this board are separate because they are separate entities. They're like, as if it were a city or something. Okay? I mean, I'm making an analogy because it's really, it's itself. The hospital boards are separately set up.
So, that would be the same case for the school district?
Yes.
And then also for the?
And school districts often have their own, they often appoint their own legal counsel, but they can have the district attorney over there if they wish.
Right. Now, and then, but then, so what I'm understanding is because there's your own elected boards, but you also have the conservation district, which is their own elected board, but it specifies in their manual that the county, that the county DA is their legal counsel.
Yeah. But that's up to them, because I believe on that particular board, I think, it's not contiguous with a county, is it? I think, I'm trying to remember whether they go over the line.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, again, these are just questions that I have, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, so I?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's a little bit complicated. But for the county itself, that is, what you're in charge of, you don't have this right. You have the independence of the district attorney here. Now, having said that, what I'd like to point out to you is, it's not like I've been uncooperative or past legal counsel.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a dog in this fight.
We have had, we, today, we've got, I mean, it's kind of funny, today, we've got on the agenda the Austin Realignment Project. I have had no problem with keeping Marquis and Auerbach on there. In fact, I think I might have mentioned that earlier, stuff. Bill Levy, one of the partners at Marquis and Auerbach, went to law school with me. And, I mean, I knew him very well in law school. And I've seen him a couple of times since, I haven't seen him lately, but, I mean, that's just an example that we have that, we have all kinds of people. And if you've got a reason that you need independent?
I'm the one who put it on, so I'll tell if you stop for one moment, I'll let you know that.
Sure.
Okay? I'm the one who asked for that, and I'll tell you why. Because in the last seven and a half months, anytime that you've been asked a question for anything to try to help us figure out what we're doing to make sure that we don't step on ourselves, you have not rendered an answer on either, you give both sides of how it would, how you could see it on this side and how it would be seen on this side. So we still have no answer to any questions that we have. So anytime that you've been asked anything, all the way up to this point, we've never received an answer from you, or know that if we are stepping over the line as far as the open meeting law, that, whoa, you are out of, you know, you cannot discuss that. And I know that a lot of that comes from Brian, but also from you, to protect that county and protect us from stepping on ourselves for some of the things that we have no idea that we're stepping on. And so I have hu, I still have huge issue, Bill. You have never answered one question we have asked you. You give us both sides of how you could defend it on their side, but we don't know if we're stepping on ourselves on this side. So we don't know if we're making the right decision on some of these things. So that's where I think that, that's where I come from, because I ask a question, or commotion is going on and questions are going on, and you're not paying any attention to what's going on out here. And so I have, not that, not that the district attorney is supposed to be in the middle of everything, all the business, but at least be paying attention to what's going on so we know that we're doing something wrong, you know? And so that's where my issue came from, that if you're not going to participate and help us, then, no, I would like to have our own counsel, that at least. And I have been told that, yes, you have to be in the meeting. And I can see where conflict, if you disagreed with what an attorney said. But if you're, I don't have a problem, as long as you're going to at least research what's on there and let us know if we're doing something wrong.
What, I'm sorry you misunderstood how I've been trying to handle things. We did have an election, we did have different ways of dealing with things. It was my perception that Mr. Herrera jumped into things too often, and I believed that, and if you saw my campaign letter, you see that I kind of hinted at those types of problems. So I've tried to be more laid back and wait for questions to come. I have, and, I mean, right now, I've got little notes on various contracts and so forth where there are problems. Sometimes I will mention those. Most of the time, I wait for somebody to ask me whether or not, you know, this is an issue, whether it's a problem.
If you see an issue ahead of time, we would like to know that there's an issue. And you have been asked questions.
I will be happy to jump in. It would be nice if you have any concerns, including like this, we could have had this conversation in your office or my office before this meeting. I don't know that it helps dramatically to have it out in public, but that's fine. I mean, I don't mind defending myself. But that's what's been going on. I disagree with your comment that I don't give you an answer. I try to give both sides so that there's an understanding, but perhaps I overdo that. Apparently, I do for you, definitely. And I will try to adjust it, but I do like you to have some education so that you might be able to guess the answer yourselves on a similar question if I'm not around or the next time something comes up.
Yeah, you stated that there was the perception that the former elected official in your office was jumping in where he didn't need to be jumping in.
Yes.
Now, I don't know if that's necessarily the consensus of this board, or if that's a public consensus, because I can say that?
That was my, that was my perception, and I feel that my perception was borne out by the electoral results.
Gotcha. So let me just state, my position is, I appreciate what the former counsel, I appreciated his position, and I'm a big boy. I can take what he's saying. I look for the legal advice. Now, there could be some opinions and things that, I don't have to listen to that. What I'm concerned about is that he spoke up and he asked, he gave us legal advice, which allowed discourse where we can engage and I could ask questions, and I think we arrive at a better decision, more legally protected decision. So I think, so what I'm saying is that I don't want you to sit there and feel like you're intruding, intrude, because I think we're elected, we can ask the questions that we want to ask and come to our, but I think that, I think that communication is healthy and important, so.
Well, just as an example, if you, because we have it on here, on the insurance stuff, if you look at just the transcript of our meet, our last meeting discussing it, and then you go back to the oldest transcript there, where you've got, I believe Doug Mills and Mr. Herrera and that, those, that group of commissioners, that administration, you'll see that it gets stilted because people are talking over each other. And if you were to go back and watch the video, you would see them constantly talking over each other, jumping in disrespectfully. I think it's been wonderful since the beginning of the year here. I think it's dramatically different.
I agree.
You guys tell me whether I'm wrong on that. And it's partly because we're not at each other's throats, we're not jumping in, trying to get on top of each other, we're holding back. I'm sorry if I overdid it, but that was my perception of what the problem had been, and I wished to do my part to try to contribute to civility. And I think you've done wonderfully, by the way.
Okay. Is there any other questions, Kathy, you have any more?
No.
Questions? Is there any public comment on the issue? Okay. So, so it was put on here for action, so is there a motion?
No, I think that I can let the dog lie now, and hopefully that we get answers to questions that we ask, so we feel a little bit more comfortable in making our decisions.
Okay. Fair enough. So we'll, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And we'll move on. Okay, so we'll move to item six. Update from the Lander County Clerk regarding the voting equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
All right, so the changes are, during the eighty-first legislative session, they passed AB 422, what puts Nevada to a top-down system. So what's going to change is just our voter registration system. We will still have all of ESNS's equipment, we'll still have all of that. It's just going to be, basically, all seventeen counties will go to the same voter registration system, which basically will be able to talk to each other. So it'll make it, if someone registers in Lander County, Elko will know immediately that they're registered in Lander now to take them out. It'll help for same-day voter registration, so we can count their votes sooner, instead of waiting for the Secretary of State to verify that they didn't vote or register somewhere else. It'll make it quicker. And that's the only thing on that that's changing. Like I said, it'll still be all of our ESNS equipment, the same stuff we do for tallying, everything's the same. All it will be is the voter registration system in the back part.
So basically, if they register here, it will then flag them in other computers that they're not a registered voter in that county?
Yep. As soon as, if they try to go register in another county, it's going to flag it to me saying that this person went to Elko and registered, and I know to take them out of mind right away.
And there was nothing that, what was the, what was the, like, the, how did they prevent that from happening previously?
How they do it right now is at night, they'll have a file that'll back up, like, will send to the state, and so then it will, every night, it will send up.
And they're having like cross-checks, like?
Yeah.
Holy, wow.
Yep. And so, and then the DMV, because they're automatic voter registrations now, too, we get a report from the DMV every day of who registered, and then we'll process that. And then after we process it, it'll send it up to the state, and then once the state sees if there's a duplicate in the system, they'll send a notification saying there's a duplicate, which this will make it a little bit easier. And then, like, all the reports throughout, the state will look the same, instead of everyone's a little bit different, it'll all look the same. The other thing that's, which hasn't, I haven't gotten a contract for you guys to look at, so I haven't brought it yet. They're going to a statewide contract, which we can opt in or opt out of for our mail ballots. So what that is, is the state's trying to find vendors that are going to work for all the counties. If you opt in to create your ballots, you don't have to opt in, you can still do your own. The difference would be, so say, right now, we use KNH for our mail ballots, they have a certain amount you have to pay regardless if that's how much we spend of that or not, like, they automatically, it's $10,000 to use them. If we use $2,000 of that, we still have to pay 10, and the state will only reimburse us for that, too. If we opt into the state contract, then you don't have to pay that, the state pays everything. But that contract hasn't came for me to present to you guys yet, but just a heads up, that's something that they're looking at, too.
Okay. Is that everything? Any questions?
I appreciate that, because that was very confusing when they put out the news. That's not the way they need to sound from the?
Yeah, and that's what it is. And what they're doing is, they're trying to get it implemented after the presidential preference primary that we have in February, so they're wanting to come in March and start implementing the voter registration. We'll still have all the same equipment, it's just that part will be the only thing that changes.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into item seven. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the contract between Lander County and Western County Alliance in the amount not to exceed $2,000. So this is, we heard from Ken Brown last agenda, last meeting, and this would be to renew his services. So I have a question. I know we've been doing business with Mr. Brown for a long time, and some of the issues that he represents us on, but with Porter, doesn't Porter represent us on all these items? I mean, are we paying for something that we already have representation from?
Well, actually, when we started a number, a number of years ago, like you said, with Ken, he also was very active in testifying before Congress on a lot of things. I don't believe he's doing that now. He's quite a bit older. A lot of our information comes from NACO, already with Pilton and all that, and then our lobbyist, of course, that we have now, that will handle anything additional, so.
I think with NACO and with Porter Group, I just think it's a redundancy that we don't need to pay, that's my opinion on it. Is there any questions? Yes?
Real quick, if I can jump in.
Hold on, Wayne, if you can come up, if you're going to speak, please? Just one second.
You've got, you've got the approve/disapprove of contract. We did the contract earlier, so it's really just approve/disapprove of the?
The payment.
Of the payment.
Right. Okay, thank you. Yes, well?
As a member of the CLUAT Board, we deal with Mr. Ken Brown and the Western County Alliance at every meeting, and the participation is probably fifty percent of what we get out of him at our public land boards meeting. And a lot of his opinions and everything are involved around Iron County, Utah. And I'm grasping, you know, and this is just my opinion, it's not me as the board, it's just my opinion, but my opinion is, is that I'm just not convinced that we're getting the bang for the buck.
Okay. I appreciate that.
You know, it's just, I think there's other entities. I mean, we have brought it up to the county commission that we hire a representative for Lander County, to be a lobbyist for Lander County, you know, in legal matters and stuff. And that is why we have done that, because we don't feel like the Western County Alliance is really all involved in Lander County.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion, questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
A motion that we disapprove the contract between Lander County and the Western County Alliance in the amount of $2,000.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Bill, was that a motion? Was that motion appropriate? Did we approve the contract last?
We already approved the contract.
We did approve the contract last meeting?
When did we approve the contract?
We did, that's what I was thinking, okay.
It was just an update.
It was just an update. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure I was remembering it correctly, so.
We don't have a contract in front of us.
No, we have, we have no contract, he just gave us an update.
Update, correct.
A motion to disapprove payment?
No, you're good. Your motion is good. His motion is good, because we're not approving the contract.
Correct.
Which would include paying the $2,000, so.
Correct.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. No, you're good, your motion is good. His motion is good, because we're not approving the contract.
Correct.
Which would include paying the two thousand dollars, so.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So we'll move into item eight. So discussion of possible action regarding the grant and projects budgeted and previously approved for the Frontier Community Action Agency and Women, Infants and Children. So this is on the agenda, because, uh, Mr. Chop had some concerns about the building that we had budgeted, and I shared some of his, uh, concern. So that's why it's on here to discuss that, to make sure that's really the road we want to go down. And to see if there's any other ways that we could possibly achieve the result that we're trying to get without building a new building. So that's why it's here. So I'll open the floor for any discussion, comments, questions?
Well, I've been, I've worked with, um, this organization for a while, trying to figure out and find a building. And Andrea has been trying to find a building. Um, if, if you go into their building, they are, there is absolutely no room and the building's falling apart. And this is a huge resource to our community, um, on, on many facets. Uh, if you ever go in there on, uh, Food Distribution Day, um, I've worked at the line to see how many people, um, uh, you know, at first it was around COVID, um, but now after the prices and the increase and the, uh, food costs, this, um, this service is used hugely for lots of stuff. And if you've reviewed any of the, um, stuff that goes out for the payments, for helping for payment, or rent, helping for payment, uh, birth certificates for people who are trying to get jobs and they require specific documents, trying to get them in, helping to get applications filled out. And this is, I mean nothing by that, but if you have people who are illiterate and don't know how to read, they come in and she helps them fill out applications and explains to them for not only the low-income, um, building, um, the housing, but the elderly housing. And so her, um, she's a huge asset to this community and has no room for, you know, food, for people to come in there. And there has not been a time that I've ever been in there where there haven't been people, um, gone in, going in there to get food. And so, um, this is a story that'll pull on your heartstrings. It was several years ago before I retired from the Sheriff's Department. Um, and this lady was convicted, so it's been adjudicated, gone through the whole system. I'm not saying her name or whatever, but she was too embarrassed, she lived in low-income. And she was too embarrassed to use the food services. So she broke into different, she was starving to death and literally, um, was starving. And so she broke into different places trying to get food. And when, um, she came into my office for something when I was still at the Sheriff's Department and we had a discussion of why, we have food services here, why, and she was too humiliated to use the services, which she now uses, utilizes that service. And, um, as do a ton of elderly people, there are handicapped people, there are just people down and out. So if you ever were curious to know what this program does, if you work food distribution and go and help um, do the days that they have that, that would change your mind. Because it really is a huge resource of what they do. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, truly, guys. So, um, I felt when, I know she was probably uncomfortable to have, to try to have to justify herself to us. But this right here on papers, just a small amount of what this organiz- organization does, so, um.
So, no, I have, I have questions first. Uh, so where do they operate, where do you operate from now currently?
At?
Like your food service, when you do your food?
Oh, in the back of the building. Uh, the food distribution's in the back of the building.
So I, I just, I've been told that, and again, this might be, it might be correct, it might not be correct, that like a lot of the food that comes in, the amount that goes to waste is like tremendous. I heard that they hand out things like Slim Jims, which I don't see any nutritional value in Slim Jim. It's like, why are we handing this out to people that want food? And it's like, so it's like, and again, it's just, it's like, do we not have a, like a current county building that could be used for the days that food services are happening to? Is it really justifiable to spend, what did we budget for that? Was it?
Two hundred.
Fifty thousand dollars on that building? That was, that was, those are my questions.
Which I respect that. And the food that we received, because I called, because we had received, um, during the wintertime, how this even happened, um, we cert- received some fruit that was not good. Um, cases and cases and cases. So I got ahold of the food bank in Reno and was, went on a rant, of course. What the hell, I'm really, what the hell are you sending us this garbage for? Because we had, I had older people saying, why are we getting this? And they're at the mercy of what people donate, period. So, you know, if they, unfortunately, if the, um, their food service is running low and the stuff that trickles downhill, um, then we get what they give us. And we really don't, because it's not paid for. Um, so they give us what they can. And so it is kind of, um, rolls downhill that way. I think that they have a lot, if you go into that building and look, they have like a mini store set up that has canned goods and stuff. And that's where people, um, every, the days of the week, it's open going and go shopping for. But there's not, there's not enough room and it needs to be more than what, just, not just the food distribution. And what she was, one of the things she's been trying to do, um, is do, uh, like a thrift store like Elko has, to make money to pay for her or to help pay for her organization. But it is difficult to get any of that stuff done and accomplished. So we had, um, tried to work with Bird a few times, but a lot of the buildings just weren't suffice, it wouldn't work. And would be utilized for something else. And so they've been trying to help us figure that out, because we didn't want to put the cost on the county if it didn't have to, if we could find another building. And whenever we've looked, they've, you know, Bird has helped us look, trying to see if there was anything that would work. So we wouldn't have to do that. And so it's, that's kind of my, it was my suggestion that we try this, because I didn't know what else to do. Um, because it's not just the food distribution on that, on that Friday, it's every day of the week. They supply baby food, they supply diapers, they supply, um, you know, all kinds of food for, you know, older people from, you know, from the colony. When their, their stuff is run out, they come and utilize, you know, and there's been comments, you know, I see that there's Escalades in line for that. Well, normally that's usually people, neighbors bringing friends in to get food. That isn't the person in the Escalade diet driving it, isn't the one getting the food. It's the three people they have in the backseat that nobody sees. So, um, that's, kinda I hope that I was able to answer.
When I put it on, it was, when I, when I had discussed this and questioned Brian about getting it on. Mine was more of the understanding when the grant came out, to do that was to do a, a, a building, you know, to help. And, and the investment was for the future, to do that, not just operating costs. And I haven't seen that, so that was my question, is where are we at with the building? And the use of the, the funds is, is to assist us to bring our, our investment down.
So that, uh, Mr. Chop is actually on the county side of it. Um, they, they aren't really a part of putting the building together. Um, we're the ones who will put the building together, put the bid packet out and, and start the construction and the, and the expenditure of the two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, then bids will come before this commission for approval, once we utilize that budget. Um, and have the engineering done and, and put it out. So, um, something else I'd like to just briefly touch on is right now currently, they're using our cemetery, that shop that's next to the cemetery that we store everything in, we have a walk-in cooler in there. And they try to put as, when they have extra surplus, they try to put as much in there as they can, so they can, you know, get it to the next round and, and try to get it handed out, keep it good, longer the better. Um, so they're taking, it would free up a little bit of space for us over there. And, and then the other thing, you know, that they do do, it's not just food, I think there's toiletries. Um, they store a lot of other things that, that take up a lot of space that they don't currently have, have much room for. So this would kinda include that as well on the, on the building. Our idea, um, when we brought this before you guys in budget was that then they could start a line that would go through the cemetery and not plug up the, the county streets. They would actually do the line through the cemetery and everybody would pull up curbside and they'd be able to hand their food off curbside and kinda make it a quicker, more convenient, um, pass-through without plugging up some of the streets. So, um, I would just want to make sure that everybody knows we are using one building of ours right now that's kinda taking up space, it's killing our storage there. We have to make a lot of trips out to the landfill. Um, and we're us- utilizing this storage out there, kinda shifting things around to, to fill them voids. But it's the toiletries and the other things that, that take up additional space that these guys, uh, probably need the, the room for.
But is our, our, the, the money that we gave, was it for operate, all operational costs? Or did we budget money in there to do the, to do additional building to help, like I said, to, for this purpose? So Bird, are we spending our money going to that, or is it everyday operation?
So one, they can speak to the grant that they, that they requested, and their grant would be for the purchasing of, of supplies and food and things. Um, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand that we're speaking of is solely for the building that would be a project that would come back before you guys. So, so two separate.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I speak to that as well?
Yes, please.
My name's Elaine Nye, Program Director for the Frontier Community Action Agency. Um, on the direct service side of things and the grant that you award us every year, which we are very grateful for. And I know your community is very grateful for, because all those funds stay in your community and do not go towards operating costs. Our grants that we currently have through Community Service Block Grant and the Family Resource Center Grants fund us to have staff, um, to pay for the rents, to, uh, pay for supplies and all of our operating costs are, come out of that.
Okay.
The funds that you, um, award us again go to direct services. And if you all have, um, been able to review what we submitted, it is all directly servicing the clients that walk through the door, that see Andrea every day. Um, that she is there in the office and Elizabeth and Erin and, like she spoke about all the people coming through lines.
I know it's, I know it's a community need. I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I was just questioning the money that we put in.
Okay.
Um, and like on the rents and that, because I did just see it, um, the, the profit and loss was here when I got here. You know, like the, the rents and that, that's, there's indigent funds for that, correct?
For, here in town, here in your community. I don't.
There are some that go through the senior center, um, but they're pretty much taxed out, maxed out as well.
Okay.
And we also, um, converse with each other when she needs help or I need help, we talk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not questioning, like I said, that. I, I was just, like I said, going back, it was, you know, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand and uh, you know, is, where we are with the building and that's fine. I know it takes time and, and there's stuff to it. I know we get a lot, most of the properties are county, right? That you guys use. Okay.
We, I would like to also mention too, that we do like, do a lot of, we get a lot of donations from the community to help with the thrift store that we're trying to build. Um, but at the same time, when people come in to, that are in need of clothes, we would just, we wouldn't make them pay for them, you know, so. All, we are also drowning in all of the donations that we get. We have a conex full of donations. We have, also have a storage shed that we're, um, renting that is completely packed to the top. Our front yard is to the point where we have to leave it outside, we have nowhere to put it. Um, I do have some pictures of like the office when it gets kinda crazy with food distribution and stuff and how packed it gets. Um.
This is Erin Sims, she's our volunteer and she's phenomenal at organizing everything. We do have a need for a third, you know, employee in the office that we just can't, there's no room for, but we would love her.
One of the other huge programs that they do is the, um, Christmas, um, Alert Program, which if you ever come in, we have uh, people in the crowd who have donated wonderfully. I mean, this community is wonderful. If you've ever come in to the Civic Center on, right before Christmas, um, that entire Civic Center floor is covered because this community is so wonderful about donating to that. It's just a wonderful thing to see. Um, but, uh, and, but it's amazing how many people are in need, because once I, like I've said before, this community, there are the have and the have-nots. And it just, there's no middle class, it's just those two. And it's, um, very sad, you know, to see.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Try and say something?
Uh, my name's Alicia Price. So, um, I just want to say, agree with Kathy, these guys do a great service for the community. I've been over there with the kids, sometimes volunteering. I've taken people that have showed up needing help over there, and these gals are really great at helping. And so I, I'd suggest if you guys have questions, go walk through there and see what they're doing, because they work really hard and, and they are a really good asset for our community, especially for people who need help with rent or, um, they just, you, you'll see several people that come in here, we've had a couple homeless people show up here. And these girls have helped them get a deposit for rent. And then they become successful in renting and paying their own way. So, um, they really.
How, how do you, how do you pre-qualify people to make sure they're not just, you know, freeload? They're like, they, they, they don't need the assistance, but they're just taking advantage of a good program. How do you pre-qualify that?
We have an assessment that is completed through a data system that we're required by the state to complete, and it goes through all of that. Um.
I mean, if you're not running a guy's name, social security number, I mean.
They have, they have to answer it. Um, a lot of times I can check, we have also a homeless management information system that currently Humboldt County only has authorization for because of the funds for housing, um, through HUD. But, but, so I could run that. A, a lot of times I will check them through that as well, just to see where they've been, what they've, if they're currently in a program. I have found that before, so then I can let whoever case management is working with them know. But it's just our assessment, it's honesty, it's, I, I let the staff know, you know, sometimes we gotta follow our gut feelings and it's either a yes or a no, and you just gotta go with it, so.
Then sometimes too, like if they've already come in for like a specific type of help, we, we won't, that's it. Like, we have to ask them like, hey, you know, if we help you this time, what are your, what are you gonna do to prevent them needing help again? So in that case, if we help and they don't take the steps to helping themselves, there's really nothing that we can do.
No, I like that answer.
My name's Lily Evans, I'm the Services Supervisor for Frontier Community Action Agency. I was gonna hang back, I was a fan, I'll jump in, but I did wanna share with you guys, we have recently, um, established a financial assistance protocol. That not only goes through your local staff, but also goes up to our administrative staff. It needs a secondary, um, approval process. And there's questions in place of what's the plan. We don't do black hole assistance, is what I call it, nothing that's just gonna fall into a black hole and never, never have fruition to a, a, a better outcome. So those questions are asked, it's all documented in our data system. Our data system goes across, um, it's Persian Humboldt, Lander and Elko Counties. So we can check if there's bouncing from one county to another. And there is a track of cost per client within that data system. As well as, um, like I said, case management follow-up from either our administrative staff or myself, if there's questions on what's appropriate or not.
Yeah, so it's basically you're lending them a handout. I mean, it's not a continuum. It's like, hey, guys, we're helping you, you're in a tough spot, we're helping you, but.
Our motto is help us help you.
Yes, good, I like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, so, um, it was a discussion of possible action. So is there a motion on it or any action to be taken? Okay, we, we'll leave it alone. Thanks, guys. Um, we'll, uh, move into item three, Brandy is here. And then we'll take a break after this item. So three. Uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the inter-local contract between the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health DPDH and Community Health Services Programs and Lander County. So, uh, Mrs. Waits had some questions on the contract, where the expenses were paying, it was kinda spoke over itself, they said, on one hand, the county would pay it, and on the other hand, the other party would pay it. So that was.
So, yeah, just a clarification. Yeah, um, Lake and Sullivan for the record, I was reading what you pointed out, Patsy, um, while we were, while we tabled it. So they are putting in here that CHS will cover the costs of their employees and the county employees to meet their operational needs. And then they're also adding it in there, um, on two point three. The cost of travel by CHS employees and county employees to meet county operational needs. So they're putting it on both sides. So if it's something that county's needing operationally, then we will cover the cost. But if it's something that they are needing or requiring, then they would cover the costs.
Give me an example of that.
So I'm thinking it has to do with the man, the stuff that they're mandated to do. So mandatory public health services is listed one point nine. And so if it's something that they're required to do by the contract, they would cover the costs of our employee traveling for those different things like the management infections.
Give me, give me an example of what that would be. An example would be like if, uh, if they had a flu pod in Guanamaca and Brandy traveled over there, they would pay the expense of that. If we had a flu pod here and it was something that we were putting on, they would. Got you, okay. So something where the, the state is mandating it, or not mandating, but required, then they would pick it up. But if it's something that the county's asking for, we'll cover that cost. Correct.
So I think my question to Brandy would be on the attachment, A, the scope of work, the mandated public health services that they're supposed to provide if they are. that they're supposed to provide if they are providing those things.
So I've actually never seen this, this is my first time, so we're just gonna look over it a little bit together. So.
So we don't know if there's been any changes, I guess.
I don't know any, yeah, I've never seen this before, honestly, um, and I feel like.
We'll look to our legal counsel, I'm I'm assuming that um, our DA, we had a chance to go through that, right?
I went through.
The original one that was on the agenda.
To some degree, I don't understand, you know, that you're you're getting into is part of what I don't understand.
The original one that you guys tabled, cause you had questions, was an amendment to the contract that expired June thirtieth. They wanted to extend it and lower the monthly amount that we would pay them. But then since that didn't get done in time, now this is a full-on renewal.
And it's a mandated, correct?
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is not off, I think this is mandated through the state. And it sounds to me like Brandy doesn't receive the services even though it's a mandate.
So like for their mandatory public health services for epidemiology, so they will report and surveillance infectious diseases. So like when I draw a sample for some kind of infectious disease, it goes to the state lab. If it comes back positive, I'm required to report that to the state of Nevada, that's probably how they're managing and tracking everything. I don't see any reports on any of those, but that's probably what this is. Um, as far as for rabies, I think that's mostly with animal control and the health officer. For sexually transmitted diseases, control, prevent and treat them, um, provide testing and treatment of cases and contacts. I collect the sample, I send it to the state lab or a different place if they have private insurance. Um, but they're not, so if that's what they're considering, like providing testing and treatment, um, my budget already covers the cost of the treatment, I have medication on site, so I don't know. I wonder if you should table this and we should go over it with Dr. Ross too, that's my recommendation and maybe them.
So we, we tabled it and we have an email chain with the gal on it and we specifically told her that you guys had these specific questions and we didn't believe that Brandy was getting the services and they said they would be here for the meeting.
So I think also, I was talking to Brandy about this, we've had a hard time with them as far as staff overturning, like I've talked to three different people and so I tried to call the gal that I've been speaking with and it's a different voicemail now, a different lady, so I don't know if she left again. So I think that's the problem we're running into.
But at the end of the day, if it's a, if it's something that's mandated, do we even have a choice? It's some, they're forcing your hand, you gotta sign it and agree to it anyway, or do, can we negotiate the terms of the contract?
Well, it sounds like they've changed some of the terms anyway, so it might be negotiable if we get them here.
Well, and I wonder if we need to read these NRSs, cause this might be stuff that your health officer that you guys put in place can handle, cause I know he was doing other things.
So I agree with Brandy, this uh, I think we should table it, make sure Dr. Ross lays his eye on it, Bill has more time to oversee it and look at it and then we'll bring it back on a future agenda. You guys good with that?
Okay.
Brandy, we can email it too.
Okay, let me pull.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, we will take a fifteen minute break. Act uh, a little bit early here just because.
This conference will now be recorded.
Some things that we're trying to uh, get addressed before our Commissioner Chopp has to leave, so. Um, so we're going to start back up with item twenty-eight. Um, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the use of the old Lander County Jail located at twenty-five East Second Street by the Silver Senior Class of twenty twenty-four for the purpose of implementing the yearly haunted house event and fundraiser from August eleventh, twenty twenty-three until December first, twenty twenty-three.
Um, so Alicia Price, um, we have used the haunted, the jail for the haunted house for I think the last five years. Um, it's a great fundraiser for the kids, um, we will supply our own insurance like we always do. Um, we just need a lot of time, it takes Cassandra a while to get things set up and built up in there again, so um, I don't know if any of you guys have ever went through, but it's a lot of fun and it makes them some money, so, and they're working for it, so that's a good thing, they're all working together as a team and earning some money for their cause, so.
Alright, so if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the use of the old Lander County Jail located twenty-five East Second Street by the Silver Senior Class of twenty twenty-four for the purpose of implementing the yearly haunted house events and fundraiser from August eleventh, twenty twenty-three till December first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item twenty-nine for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove allowing free swim at the recreation center September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three during the annual Battle Mountain Burner Car Show.
Yep, so um, you guys have done this in the past for us, um, we uh, what we do is if the kids swim free, it kinda keeps them occupied so they're not touching cars and such, so everyone gets a little crazy if they touch their cars, you know, so. Um, and we do games for them that day too, so um, it's just an extra thing to keep those kids busy.
We did this last year for you.
We did, yes, yeah. Yeah, it works real well, so.
Very well attended?
Uh, yeah, it's always well attended, yeah, especially if the kids know it's free, then they're really excited, so, yeah.
There was a lot of kids too.
Yeah, there is a lot of kids, so, yeah, and we try to do different games in the day too, so they're not there the whole time, so.
It's a good community event, how many cars did you have last year, Alicia?
We usually average about a hundred, so last year was cut, a little lower, cause they, we decided to change the date, but um, we're going back to August next year, so.
And a lot of people from out of town.
What's that?
Did Reed give you permission to park on the grass?
We get, yeah, we we parked there, I don't know, Reed doesn't, where is Reed, I'll take it up with him. He will, if he hasn't, he will. So yeah, Marilyn's real good, her helpers are marking the sprinklers and stuff so we don't mess those up, so, but yeah, it's pretty good.
Okay, if there's no question, we'll have a motion.
Oh, wait. Go ahead. A motion to approve allowing free swim at the recreation center September sixteenth during the annual Battle Mountain Burner Car Show.
Have a motion and a second, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, we're going to move to item twenty-seven. Uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove allowing Lander County retiree employees purchase health insurance at their own cost up to age sixty-five compliant with NRS two eighty-seven oh twenty-three. So, I had a conversation with uh, uh, Mrs. Young here about this issue and I know we've already heard it. Um, in discussion with her, we had, there were some ideas that were pitched around and what, that I don't know if we necessarily heard the last time we discussed it, so I just encouraged her to see her county manager to get it put back on the agenda, so then we could have discussion in an open forum and have transparency on it. So that's why it's back on the agenda.
So I'm Michelle Young, for any of you that don't know me, um, thank you for putting this on and good morning to you all. I did have a discussion with Brian, I had heard that he had a solution to maybe um, continuing insurance for retired county employees moving forward, it seemed like at the last meeting, um, last discussion, some of the hangup was the cost on the county's backend.
Yeah, it was uh, it was the cost and the, and then the, basically the 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 load that would put on staff were the concerns, right?
Right, so there was a suggestion, um, and I think it came from Brian or whatever, to add a percentage onto what the employee's cost of the insurance would be to help cover, let's call it the backend costs for the county on that. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't have an objection to that.
No.
Um, I think that that's completely fair, that, you know, you guys are doing a favor for us and that whoever the county person is that has to manage that in with all the rest of the employees for the county, that some of that portion covers that.
Right.
And and I'm all good with that, so, you know, again, I'm here, thanks to Brian, ideas to discuss this.
Right, this is how I seen it, so basically, when we, when we, when we discussed it the first time, the concerns were the cost, the load it put on and um, then there was discussion on like uh, employee retention, could we, is it something that we could do as a county to help maintain employees and so on. So anyway, after the meeting, I did a lot of thinking on the subject. Um, because I, number one, I wouldn't be in favor if it increased, um, basically if it became another uh, expense that the county had to pay, so that's when I was like, I wonder if that would be possible, that, cause we already discussed that the employee could cover it. And I said, I was thinking to myself, well, why couldn't we just put a premium on it, whatever that premium would be, five percent, ten percent, I don't know, it's something we'd have to discuss to, to see what would be uh, workable and doable. But if they were, first off, if the employees were willing to do that, they're allowed to stay into the program, they're, they're uh, absorbing the fee, but then two, you're giving the employees something to, it's like, like when they're no longer employed here, it's like, it's a benefit, like, hey, I wanna work for the county, this is a great option, which at no cost to us. And then I was later thinking like, cause there was a discussion, you pay, if you were here thirty years, twenty-five years, why would you limit it? So if we're, if we're, if with an insurance pool, there's power in numbers and if people wanted to pay that fee and that premium to be on it, you welcome them, because basically what you're doing is you're lowering, lowering, the more people you have, the less, the less it becomes for everybody and you're strengthening it, because I, and I think, did we, did we ever have any discussion on it, on that, was it on that item or a different item where we had talked about possibly looking at later down the road becoming self-insured? Does anybody recall that, did we have any mention of that?
No, we, we were never talking about totally self-insured. We took the big jump this year for the, you know, the higher risk. Um, the other thing was, uh, our concern was, uh, the ones that might be staying, uh, that could not buy insurance individually because of the health situation, so they might be hiring claims.
Yes, yes.
So um, um, that, that additional premium will help us out a little bit. And I, I have to agree with you, Brian, because it's been a big, really uh, uh, issue that you continue to think about and the situation and if they're not anywhere close to Medicare, what in the world are they gonna do when they retire or in between? And um, and I mentioned before, many of them take other jobs and so forth. And and if we can provide for them to do that, I think that would be really something. So my concern is, um, number one, um, would it be ongoing people? Or can we go back and pick up anybody that might have, have done that? And the other concern is, can we actually place a condition on it? That you will have to have a minimum of twenty years or fifteen years or something like that, legally, can we do that?
We talked about that at the last meeting.
So, a couple, a couple of things that, that I think that we spoke of in the last meeting that I just wanna bring back is the the premium, we have to, we have to remember that our premiums are based off of our claims. And so, um, typically the older members you have on, on your, increase your liability, which then um, becomes a liability somewhat to the pool as well, when you go to these pool pack meetings, they talk about what, what liability you bring to the pool, so do the members want you to stay in that pool because you may be a bigger liability and, and as a group pooled, um, you can create a situation where they can actually kick you out of the pool if your liabilities are too much. Um, so that's just for consideration, I'm not saying that would happen or that we have near the people to do that, but this is, you know, I wanna make sure that everybody knows what we're getting into if we get into it. Um, Patsy is far more versed in insurance than I ever will be, so she could probably speak to some of the concerns that I'm throwing out there. Um, and then how we would address the premiums, um, as they increase for these other members that would be adding themselves to this to, to make sure that it was paid by, by the members and hold them to it. The last concern we have is we no longer have the ability to withdraw from their check. So they would have to come in and actually, we'd have to go chase them down and make sure that they were paying us.
Number one, yeah, I don't think you chase them down, if you have to chase them down, then they're just gonna forfeit their insurance because that's the whole point, we're not putting a load on staff, we're not, we're not creating that.
No, so we, we would, but our, our insurance is paid in advance, so we, that month, if they didn't pay, we may be a little behind, so it may be a burden that we would take on in a budget, maybe it would be some shortfalls here and there, but that's just something to be aware of.
Can I address that? Can you not, um, according to the statute, can you not take it directly out of our PERS retirement?
PERS has to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, I thi, I think we'd have to, that's something I'm not familiar with.
Yes, you can, I talk to them.
Maybe Lakin can speak to it.
I talk to PERS and you can, um, but they have to approve it, so they have to be willing.
Right.
And they have to be, uh, but we're talking, it, it, that's if they're collecting PERS. If they're not collecting PERS, then that option's not on the table.
Understood.
I mean, Patsy, you, you can answer this, cause you're pretty savvy with insurance, but the more people that you had in this, wouldn't it dilute the actual premium that people are paying? Because everybody's picking up.
That's true to some extent, yes, but they're not active employees, they're retired and therefore, uh, just in the very sense of it, the older you get, the more medical claims you have, so we're adding a group that is going to be a really high-risk group, yes, comparatively.
So, cause what we're talking about is up to the age of sixty-five and then at that point, I guess that's because.
Medicare kicks in at sixty-five, yes.
And then, and then Lander County would drop them off the system at that time, correct, is that, is that what the idea was here?
Yep. And in, in the other question you had, according to my understanding of the statute, the statute says, um, reinstatement of blah, 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 so my understanding of that would be, correct me if I'm wrong, you people, that if we choose to do this and you set a beginning date of October first, twenty twenty-three, it's like an open enrollment. You can put in whoever you want in that and then after that, after you initially set that, it reverts to that statute for um, adding people to it in even numbered years, I believe is how the statute reads. I'm sorry?
I read that, I thought it was every two, I understood that it's like every two years.
I didn't see it as every two years, I said it as even numbered years, right? That's how I, that's what I thought.
So it'd be two years.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct.
Yep.
Um, so it's, it's up for discussion, any questions, comments, concerns?
I have one comment, Lakin Sullivan for the record, I think if you guys do it, you should stipulate it that they have to be retiring into PERS so that we know that they're gonna be getting that and that they can't have to be under Medicare age. Those would be the two things that, and then it kinda eliminates it to retired employees, but they're not of age for Medicare yet. Is that how you guys were kinda thinking?
Well, then I have a question as well, um, because then it's gonna refer, are you talking about current active employees? Are you gonna consider past employees as well as are you gonna put a cap on it of how many years of service they have with the county?
Well, so again, I'm, I'm coming from the point of like, why would you limit your pool? Cause the larger your pool, everybody, it's, becomes like, this is how I'm thinking, I could be wrong if I am, just tell me so. But you're, you're diluting the expense because you have more numbers, right? There's greater power with more numbers.
You said to speak if it came up, um, you're generally correct, but to keep in mind that the question is, is the pool a healthy pool? If the people you're adding are generally not healthy, then you're frankly screwing yourself.
That's the high risk.
But how are you screwing yourself?
And you can't pick and choose.
Cause that's the point, is the people that are coming on, they're the ones that are paying the premium and the cost.
Well, we're the one that's gonna pay the increased rate based off of claims.
But so are we.
See, that's why, that's why the premium, that's why I'm saying the premium has, we have to have a smart way because the premium has to be able to pay for that, that's where I was coming. A hundred people can be better than ten people.
If you're usual.
Correct, but that's where the, the, like I said, the liability to the pool is something that needs to be considered because when Pool Pack takes on members and they have their, their group that comes in and they, and they make that decision, if, if there are members that are a huge liability that's costing the remainder of the pool, a bunch, the remainder of the pool's only at five percent and ninety-five percent's taken up by one, they can eliminate you from the pool. So then they're eliminating the ninety-five percent risk. Um, so that's, that's kinda the concern that I have, just from sitting in, in some of the, the pools meetings, is they, they look at every member and what liability that member brings to the pool. And then, and then everybody is, you know, if, and that's, I really encourage every commissioner to go to the, the next annual Pool Pack conference where they bring everybody in and they talk about the pool and, and how, how everybody is um, accumulated there because we're attached to people in, you know, Pennsylvania and um, I mean, it's, it's, it's broad, right? So there's multiple pools throughout the, throughout the country and that's the, the concern is, what liability do we add to ourselves as a county mem, as a county member of that, so, and Tim and other people that are much more well-versed than I am in that, would have to probably speak to this. So I think that maybe we can come up with some parameters of what we wanna do and then bring Pool Pack and bring Tim and bring anybody else in here, the experts in the field, and get a real idea of what this would cost to include members and, and if there should be a cutoff.
I know you're talking about Pool Pack, but that's, that's our different insurance. The ones that we wanna put on are going to be with the Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield, is it not?
Right.
Yes, but Tim has said, spoke the same thing at the last meeting, that, those minutes are in that backup, but I do agree, if you guys go forward with it, then Tim needs to be involved in that process.
So then, in this whole thought process, thinking, well, if you get, if you have a large like outreach, people that wanna do this, at what point could you become self-insured? Are there other counties or entities that are self-insured that are functioning and doing well?
That's a good insurance question because I know that, um, if you guys read the paper, Humboldt County went self-insured.
Elko County is self-insured as well.
Is it the school district self-insured?
They are.
And I don't know how that, I don't know how that works, I know that when, when I spoke to Tim about that, he said with some of these rising costs of medications of some of them being, you know, they're very rare that somebody gets one of these diseases, but the medication for them can cost up to a million dollars for one dose. Um, and that's, that's when if you're self-insured, you gotta front the million bucks.
Well, of course, anytime you go self-insured, you have a reinsurance, so I mean, you're never gonna self-insure forever, you're gonna set a threshold of something. Uh, we will ensure, uh, reinsure any person that, um, I have. Uh, we will ensure, uh, reinsure any person that, um, has over a hundred thousand dollars in claims, for example. Or if you meet two hundred and fifty thousand in claims for the year, we'll step in at so much of a percentage. And there are insurance companies that do nothing but reinsure. So, um, if, if we started out on this and we got into a real situation, um, it's always something we could think about, but it isn't anything I think we'd, I'd, I'd go with maybe raising our deductible higher like we just did, you know, cause we're starting out with our own risk pool to see. But I think we should run that a couple of years before you think about jumping into.
Well, just a thought, I was just bringing it up.
But no, it's all, all things that, that you need to consider in the future. I mean, the, the big companies that are self insured, um, are out there. I mean, from, you know, Nevada Energy and the casinos and Southwest Gas, they're big ones. And the interesting thing is, one of the big incomes besides mining to the state is the tax on insurance. Because every time you buy an insurance policy, the insurance company pays tax. So our insurance division is a big, heavy supporter of our income. All these self insuring groups don't pay it. And, and I've been trying for years to say, why don't you at least put a premium on them to help the state? But, um, but it's an interesting point because that's where they save so much.
Yeah, my mind was kinda wild, running wild.
But I would like to see us some, now that if we're in concurrence of, of looking at this again, um, that we put it back on and, and take a real serious look about something we might be able to do for them.
Fair enough. Anybody have any questions, concerns about it? Is there public comment on it? Do you guys have anything more to say?
I got something to say, just a quick.
Yeah, come up front. Push that little button.
As it's going along, you know, he's talking about liabilities. Well, most everybody is gonna be under sixty-five years of age, right? Most of everybody that's under sixty-five years of age is usually fairly healthy. So that group is not gonna be as bad as you think they are. They're gonna be a little healthier, they're just able to retire sooner because they acquired so many years within the system. That's my thought.
And you're, what's your name for the record?
Mike Young.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity for the discussion and the considerations.
Yes.
I know we're talking about that as they get older. And if you do put limits on age and years, um, I would say that the people gave their youth to the county if they worked it. So even if they do have higher claims on the end, I think they earned it. Cause they didn't do it when they were younger. So I mean, that's my opinion about it.
Thank you.
I would just like some direction from the commission on exactly what you guys want us to bring back here. I mean, we'll bring Tim obviously, but, uh, the talking points for what Tim should be researching or what we should be researching.
So what is the, how could we establish what the premiums would be that each individual comes in, you know, so it's like, is it a different premium for each different person? Or is it based on a number of people that become, it's a set fee, ten percent, fifteen percent premium on top of what we're already paying? To handle the load on the system and whatever potential increase there could be in the future? That would be one question. Another question I had was, uh, and I would thought we'd, I'd just bring it up when Tim was in here, cause you know, on this whole self insured idea, you know, I was looking at, okay, well, if Lander County could do it, because with insurance, the larger the pools become, you would think that it dilutes risk a little bit, right? Why couldn't you have some coalition amongst like all northern Nevada counties, Elko, Eureka, Humboldt, Lander, where we become this self insured entity? You know what I'm saying? Where we'd be, we'd become our own group, you know, so that's, that's another idea I had. I mean, it's, it's, uh, great things come from discussion and ideas and, uh, just one of the ideas I had, so I don't know if Tim could weigh in on that as well.
Would, would you guys mind if I re- reached out to Elko County and Humboldt County and just seen if that would be something that maybe they would be interested in?
Because I think if we can make it work, this, this point exactly to where we're helping with our retirees, cause insurance is such a, it's such a racket, right? It's just, it's just another thing that, another something that we do, Lander County does for its employees that would help, I would think, in retention and basically getting people to come want to work for Lander County.
One of the things you'd have to look at is because you're, you're actually putting together your own insurance company, so to speak, all has to be approved by the insurance division.
Got you.
Pool Pack, um, when they first started, and of course they went with the government part of it, and that's exactly what they did. And it took them a while to be approved by the insurance division to have enough funds to support it and everything. But, um, Wayne Carlson started that, uh, initially, so you might even wanna talk to him about that. Maybe Pool Pack will take on another part and, and take in the health insurance part of it, who knows?
What, what did you say that was the?
Insurance Division.
Insurance Division?
Insurance Division is the one you'd have to have all the approvals from. You just can't start an insurance conglomerate and say, oh, I mean, that's like having all your neighbors together and say, we'll get our own insurance. I mean, no one has to be approved by the insurance division.
How does the hospital work here? Are they under their own insurance or is it under County insurance?
No, they, they have their, um.
Their own? As well as like the school has their own?
It's a hospital.
Yeah, so again, it's just, again, it's like these are entities that, you know, hey, maybe they should join the, the group, you know, it's just like, I don't know, just some thoughts I had, so.
Yeah, so I'll come up with the time it'll take, uh, to get through the, the insurance division approval, what that would take. And then I'll reach out to Elko, Humboldt and see if they're interested, reach out to Wayne Carlson and Pool Pack and see if that's something that he could speak to.
We also need to talk about what, what our, what our minimum is, that we wanna do on that with the retirement? Tw- twenty years and retired or?
Okay, well, I just think that'd be a question for Tim because my, my thought on it, it's like, yes, we could set that limit, but would we kinda be, that's the whole point, is you're encouraging numbers to come to, you want more people, right? Cause I'm seeing it, if I'm thinking correctly, it would, it would di- it would, uh, dilute the, the, the cost share, the risk, because it's more people, right? You, there's power in numbers, so to limit it to twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, I don't know, if I'm thinking right, I don't know if that would be beneficial.
Okay, but if, if you, if you take that scenario and you say, I've worked ten years and I'm leaving the county, but I'm gonna work, I'm gonna be self-employed or whatever. So I'm gonna keep county insurance.
That's, that's where I was going with it. Do they have to actually be retiring to get this? And I think the statute speaks the, of it being retired.
It has to be retired, it has to be retired.
I think they, I think the statute says.
Yeah, I think that would be.
But that would be the question is, do, do we wanna put that stipulation or could it be, there could there be power in numbers? If they're wi- if they're willing to pay that extra premium.
I get, I get that, but I think the statute says retired employees.
Oh, got you, okay. Well, we'd have to operate within the statute.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And invert some of the concerns that you said would be concerned, that needs to, I mean, there's strongly need to be addressed as well.
You bet.
So can I ask a question? Um, Mr. Schaefer, my understanding is, is we can't do less than the statute, but you can do more than the statute. So if the statute says it has to be this, then you can do that. And then if you wanna add a requirement on top of it for, you had to work for the county for fifteen years or elected officials have to do at least one term, the whole term, however you decide to do that. And there's an additional user fee on the backend for the county employees, you can do that, right?
In general, as to statutes, you're correct. They, they create a floor, not a ceiling usually, but everything is dependent on how it, I mean, I hate to sound like I'm making both sides, but there are two sides to that coin. You can in fact go too far.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, great, so we'll leave it at that. Is, are we still finding your?
Oh, yeah, no, I got a lot.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. We'll move into item, uh, twenty, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County Assessor to receive an increase on their credit card limit from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
Okay, Commissioner, this was on, um, we just got confirmation from Oasis today that they would take on the additional um, fees that Lura has been paying off of her credit card. Um, her limit was at twenty-five hundred like everybody else's was, and then there were nine hundred dollars in, in some tech fees that we pay monthly, um, I believe for like email and things like that, that, that we have to pay, that were coming off of Lura's card. So she was concerned with go- going over, if she has classes or things like that she has to go to, with the automatic payments coming out of it. But with Oasis taking them over, I'm not sure that it'll be necessary to increase the, the card. And I will say that we've had some great results since we put some of these new terms into the, the credit card spending has, uh, plummeted.
Glad to hear that. So, um, so like, I guess we don't really have to do anything on this item unless you guys would like to. No? Okay, good, so we'll just move on.
It'll remain, that makes it remain at twenty-five hundred.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need a, we don't need to do anything, right? Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll move to item eighteen, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, changing and or canceling September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three commissioner meeting due to NACO conference.
And I believe that this, uh, that our district attorney can, can speak to that because I think he wanted to attend the conference and that would, um, leave us without legal for our meeting. That's why this is on, okay?
He is registered for the conference as well as myself, you, and I'm, are you going to the conference, Patsy?
I'm sorry?
The NACO conference?
Yes, um, actually, the, the, the main thrust of it is gonna be the twenty-seventh with all the full workshops and everything. The twenty-eighth, they usually have something just in the morning. So if we didn't wanna cancel, if, you know, we probably wouldn't be missing all that much unless you had a particular workshop that you were going to attend, otherwise I thought we can still attend the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh and get everything in and then come to the meeting here if you wanted to. It's up to you folks.
I, I believe that it solely depends on what, uh, district attorney's gonna do.
Yeah, it depends what's going, cause they usually quit about noon on the twenty-eighth.
Well, I don't wanna be the cause of everything getting changed, um, I, I'm trying to go along with however, how to make it best for everybody. I, I don't know, do we have pressing stuff that we need to get done that this would be a real problem or no?
I don't know what's, do you have, do you have any foresight on the, on the future business, no? So we'll definitely have the meeting in, on the fourteenth, and then we just need to decide if we need that second meeting. We could just do away with that meeting altogether, correct?
What we could do is we could actually pull up the, um, the agenda and take a look at everything and see if it's something that you would like to attend on that day. And if it is, then we can put it on the next.
I have pulled, are you talking about for NACO?
Do you remember what?
I have pulled up the NACO agenda and I've looked at all of that. I have him registered for all three days. They do not have the workshops listed yet, so they haven't broke down specifically what the workshops are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, if you wanna change it, then that's.
How about moving the date on our, uh, commissioners meeting to like Tuesday or something?
Completely, well, we can't do Tuesdays, we got court.
Robert, quick for the sheriff's office, um, just because we've changed or the county's changed their process for billing or bills being paid, any meetings you cancel or move, just, uh, if you could address how we're gonna process bills for that? Normally would be processed that meeting because then it's a month before you pay a bill.
That is true.
Cause we, we revert it back to the way it used to be so they don't go out till you guys approve them.
Okay. So if the, but if the commission is good with it, we can still pay the bills like we have been in the past. Um, that, and then it will just be one meeting that the bills are paid pending your guys' approval, but we used to pay the bills prior to your guys' approval, and we tried to do a little self correction on that and go back to some old ways. So we could still pay all of our bills and be doing business as we did for years.
So if we, if we cancel the meeting, we simply put in that we ratify the bills for that particular?
Yes.
Timeframe, rather than approve them, okay.
Okay, I'll hear a motion, if somebody has one to.
Motion that we cancel September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three commissioner meeting due to the NACO conference.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Do we wanna add the ratification of the bills?
Once you're.
Can we ratificate or does it would be?
No, that we will ratify.
That we will ratif- that we will ratify.
All bills will be ratified for this timeframe.
All bills will be ratified for this timeframe.
Okay, so amended the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So we will move to.
Thank you, Robert, we would've missed that.
Okay, number twenty-three, and then we'll get back on our normal course. So, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the road closure and road restriction for the annual flu pod on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three from four to eight P M, road to be restricted is North Palmer Street and road to be closed is West Humboldt Street.
She, sorry, she was actually asking to do number twenty-four so she could leave, but I'm filing twenty-three as well.
Oh. Okay, good, so we'll move right into twenty-four after that.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, that was probably my fault. Brandy Bingoa for the record. So this is just our annual flu pod. We close the road, um, from four to eight, and then we block the other road and we let traffic in and out of their homes.
This is something we've been doing every year, so.
Yep, we do it every year.
It shouldn't be a problem.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the road closure and road restriction for annual flu, flu pod on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three from four, four to eight P M. Road to be restricted is North Palmer Street and road to be closed is West Humboldt Street.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, from Jared, second by Kathy, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move into item twenty-four, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the affiliation agreement between Lander County Health and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of Great Basin College.
Hi, I'm Stacy Crouch. I am a nursing professor with Great Basin College in the Winnebago campus, or at the Winnebago campus.
So this is their affiliation agreement, so we utilize Great Basin College's nursing program to administer flu vaccines during our flu pod. And so this is their affiliation agreement that they have with different entities where they conduct clinical.
And all of our students, they're nursing students, they are first year nursing students. They're coming in and they'll assist Brandy, myself, I show up too and participate in the vaccine, or the vaccination clinic or the other instructor whose name is Stacy also, so it's pretty easy there. Um, but we're there with our students and all the other nurses are there and we're vaccinating the community. And they're getting great knowledge and a lot of practice on these skills.
And they're very helpful.
Um, did anybody have any questions on the contract?
No, it's a four-year contract, right? Um, I don't know.
From August twenty-third.
They're usually two to four years. Yep, twenty, twenty-seven.
It's four years, um, just, you said it, jump in, I did review this contract. The termination is a little different than we normally do, but it makes sense. It's three months notice and, but then on top of it, it's when in session or about to begin the session. Obviously, you've got students coming, you can't, you can't reasonably expect to cancel their, uh, the contract with new students coming in like thirty days before, cause it doesn't give them enough time to figure out what that flip they're gonna do. So I think it's reasonable under the circumstances.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the affiliation agreement between Lander County Community Health and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of Great Basin College. All three of them stay in the four years.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I'm correct, to get back on course, it's item nine, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission, which currently has three openings. New terms are from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And our, um, person that would like to be, to serve on the board is Wayne Travis Nebecker. You have anything to say, Wayne? Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Wayne Travis Nebecker to serve on the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission from July first, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-five.
Okay, second. I'd like to say thanks to Wayne for, uh, volunteering and stepping up, cause I know it takes time and, and I, and, uh, I do appreciate the time you're willing to put forth, and I appreciate it, so. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Ten, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Advisory Board to manage wildlife, which currently has one opening. New terms are from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and our applicant is Sean Merlich.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the reappointment of Sean Merlich to the Lander County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. Term will be July first, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-six.
And we have a motion and a second, and I'd like to just basically state it again that I appreciate his willingness to serve as a volunteer, so. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, eleven, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the reappointment of one. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Austin Airport Advisory Board as a full-time position in place of the alternate, which currently has one opening. New terms from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025, and our applicant is Champy Douglas.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Champy Douglas to serve on the Austin Airport Advisory Board as a full-time position. He has been an alternate, so currently the terms would be July 1st, 233 through June 30th, 25.
We have a motion and a second, and again, I'd like to thank Champy Douglas for his willingness to volunteer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Twelve, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Debt Management Board, which currently has one opening. New terms are from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025, and our applicant is Steve Steinmets.
Motion to approve the appointment of Steve Steinmets to the Lander County Debt Management Board, which currently, or sorry, then the term will be January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion.
On second.
And a second. And again, I'd like to thank Steve for his willingness to be a volunteer and help us out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, 13. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove a lease agreement between Lander County and Gale Utter for privately, for a privately owned hangar on county airport property in Austin, Nevada.
I do have one question on this and actually pertains to this one and the one we're going to talk about in a minute more. Over on page two, when we're asking for insurance, we're asking for the amount to be $2 million in insurance. And I thought, usually there's a, there can be a difference depending who insures, but I thought $2 million might be a bit more expensive than the million. Or do we really need that much insurance? It's a liability, basically, because it's their, their property. I mean, our property, their hangar. So do we really need that high insurance?
What if their building blows up and destroys the jet?
Yeah, can, can we lower that a little bit or ask for a liability policy only or something?
That'd be more for Bill. Standard for all of our event insurance is a million dollars, but I don't know about property as far as, I think we just kind of copy and paste it from what we have here in Battle Mountain for the hangar lease agreements here, so.
But, but those are our hangers. Were they not?
No, no, they are. Yep, we do have one that is not ours that is.
Yeah, that one group, yeah.
Yep.
But, so I understand that when we own the hangar, but I'm thinking maybe we could be a little bit less on the insurance or maybe just leave that open or something and ask them.
Entirely up, entirely up to you guys, however you like. And then also, we have a 90-day out. Typically, we do a 30-day out, right? So why is it 90-day out on this one?
I was going to bring that up.
Okay.
But that's okay. I mean, unless you have a problem with it, but, you know, standard is 30 days. But having said that, the guy's got to find another place to put his airplane. I think 90 days is reasonable.
Okay.
So maybe we could amend that to just put that they maintain a liability policy and of course we're named as additional insured and we don't set an amount?
Well.
Boy, I don't know if you'd not want to set.
Yeah, I don't know that you'd want to do that.
Minimum of a million.
You could set, if you think it's, you want to take the chance, you can set a lower amount now and if you decide you want to change it, because you do have the 90-day out, you have a little bit of leverage to ask them to change it and change it at a future date if, if you decide that that's what you want to do.
I think that's how things fall through the cracks, though, and get over seen if you ask them, I mean, I think if you set a million, if that's standard, then if you do it any other way, then that's how things get always booked.
I'm okay with that.
I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the lease agreement between Lander County and Gale Utter for a privately owned hangar on county airport property in Austin, Nevada and change our liability maximum to $1 million.
So we have a motion?
I'll say it.
And there's a second. So how are the contracts written for Battle Mountain? Is it a $2 million that we have?
They're, they're not.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my assumption is that it was, that it's a two because we did copy and paste, but this did go through the Austin Airport Board. They have their, their board up there, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
You, you sit on the board up there, the Austin Airport Board, they, they discuss this, correct?
Well, yes, but we couldn't take any vote.
Because most of you are, are members. So I, so I have a, Ray Williams wasn't able to make the meeting today, but he just said as the chair of the Austin Airport Board, I should add that the board appreciates the support and response from the county staff. Donnie from Public Works, David Meyer of J U B, and Tim Miller from D B T. I am proud to be a part of the progress that has been accomplished for the Austin Airport, so he appreciates any of the support that comes from this board as well. So my only question on lowering from two to one million is that I, I don't know what kind of like risk and liability there's associated with airports and what it could be. I mean, if it's, if it's a underinsured, like it's not enough, then who's, who's held, who's left holding the ball? Us, our insurance? Is that, or am I not understanding the relationship correctly?
What ultimately, yeah, whoever owns it is going to be possibly liable for liabilities.
So basically, he may want to have it as two million, right? Because it's his policy, correct?
Well, it doesn't say that.
We're just asking for a minimum of a million.
Yeah.
And then he could do whatever he wanted to.
It's liability. It's like if somebody is messing around there, whatever, and, and gets cut or gets trips or whatever and, and falls or something like that, it's his.
So anything that he's under, he would be responsible for?
Right.
Okay, good. I'm good with that.
That doesn't mean that you wouldn't be named, as our counselor would probably say. But, but no, he's, that's the whole point. We're named as an additional insured on his policy.
Got it, I understand.
Yeah, in case it comes over onto us.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, 14. Did I get that correct, that we moved up to a million? Yes, to a million.
Minimum.
Yes, yes. So for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove a lease agreement between Lander County and Ray Williams for a privately owned hangar on county airport property in Austin, Nevada.
It's the same, you, so, if you want to do the same, one million again, so.
I will make.
Are there four of these in a row?
Three.
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 I'm sorry, is what?
The lease agreement, sir.
He's just asking how many there were, there's three of them in a row.
Three.
That's all he was asking.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the lease agreement between Lander County and Ray Williams for a privately owned hangar on the county airport property in Austin, Nevada and change our, the liability policy to a minimum of $1 million.
Okay, so we have a motion, second.
On second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, 15. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove a lease agreement between Lander County and Champy Enterprise LLC for a privately owned hangar on county airport property in Austin, Nevada.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the agreement between Lander County and Champy Enterprises LLC for a privately owned hangar on the county airport property in Austin, Nevada and change the liability insurance to a minimum of $1 million.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, 16. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove Resolution 2023-13 directing apportionment of net proceeds received in the month of July 2023.
Lake and Sullivan, for the record, this is just another distribution that we received for last year's proceeds.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to read that? Into the record.
Kathy.
Kathy, would you like to read it?
I'd be happy to read that resolution in for you. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 2023-13 of the Board of Lander County Commissioners, a resolution directing apportionment of net proceeds received in the month of July 2023. Whereas on July 3rd, 2023, the Lander County Treasurer received $1,256,124.42 in net proceeds. And whereas it is a desire of the Lander County Board of Commissioners to appropriate the net, net proceeds as follows. Mandated, Commission Page, General Fund 3%, $37,683.73. Fund 00100031345. Assessor Tech Fees 2%. Fund 3000032223. China Springs, $1,495.88. State Medical Indigent, $33,786.20. Fund 00400031340. State Indigent. Now I got to follow this across, I'm losing it. That is $7,737.30. Fund 00400031341. Capital Acquisition, $15,474.59. Landfill, $25,790.99. Fund 01100031340. Hospital, $250,355.73. Fund 06000031340. Total is $397,446.91. Discretionary, Austintown, $58,677.51. Fund 02000031340. Battle Mountain Water Fund, $800,000. Fund 22600031340. Total discretionary amounts, $858,677.51. Gives us a total of $1,256,124.42. Whereas the Lander County Board of Commissioners desires to use discretionary net proceeds to fund the Austintown Fund, 020, and the Battle Mountain Water Fund, 226. Be it further resolved, the fiscal officer and the treasurer is directed to distribute the payment for net proceeds according to the schedule passed and adopt this 10th day of August 2023.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Patty, for reading that. 17. Thanks, Lake and Sullivan. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the site lights agreement between Lander County and Southwest Gas Corporation. So it looks like we've had some changes, just primarily.
Lake and Sullivan, for the record, so they are adding additional equipment to their space and to the building, and so they are asking for a new lease agreement and they'll be paying more in lease. And for the BLM, we had to notify the other tenants that occupy the mountain, and so we did that. And all of them received the certified letter except for two entities that theirs came back. So I'm just waiting on the BLM to tell me if I have to resend it to a new address or not.
You know, Lake and, I was just curious, because I see, you know, I'm sure it's a standard contract, our counselor will tell us, and an increase over. Did, do you ever get a chance to check like any of the other counties and see what the normal price is? Is it normal in all the counties? Or do they negotiate?
I think the BLM has like a set fee that they require, but I'm not 100% sure. But I, I have never reached out to any other counties and asked what they charge. I don't, I don't know if there's other counties that have stuff like this, like we do with Mount Lewis. I know we have a pretty, a good mountain for things like this. We have like the FBI up there, the FAA, the DOE and things like that that occupy the mountain, but.
I know, they just seem to vary so much and we're not really on top of that. I didn't, I mean, it all seems fair, but I mean, if we don't have anything to go by, we're really in the dark.
It has to do with their space rack amount that they use and the type of equipment they have, but that is out of my league. Robert might be able to speak to that. I don't know how they came up with those fees.
I also want to, well, he's coming up, I want to point out something.
Sorry, I was trying to keep you out of it.
Changes that is.
I don't know the answers to the question.
You can see that part of the handout. I don't understand what the reason for the changes is, but one that does concern me is the termination. You don't have the right to terminate this puppy. It has to be for cause, basically, the way they've written it. And I'm not real comfortable with that. They can get out from under it because it's no longer economically feasible for them, but we don't have a similar way to get out from under this.
Well, then we just need to renegotiate?
I would suggest at least the termination part needs to be renegotiated. I just don't understand the rest of it, why they wanted to change it so much. Because what we have, I worked, keep in mind, maybe I've got my pride mixed up in this, but I worked on the original agreement of this back 2007 or thereabouts, and we had a whole bunch of these types of site agreements I had to slog through for the mountaintop back then and finally got it to where everybody was accepting of it. You might even remember that, Brian. I mean, that was, that far back.
Bill, I, I gave them your comment about you asked why there is not an early termination for the county.
Yeah.
But there is, in 13.
If it's for cause.
It says 60 days prior written notice. I, is that not? This agreement may be terminated without further liability in 60 days.
Says by either party upon default of any covenant. Okay, so that means if you, you know, if you screwed it up, then it's by either party if the premises are fully or partially damaged for any reason. Like I said, it's for, these are for cause things. What we normally have is without cause, we just decide one day or you get a completely different commission, they decide they want to do things completely differently. They, they can completely stop our contracts and move forward. It's a safety net for the county, actually for everybody, but I've always seen it as a safety net if you find yourself dealing with somebody that you no longer trust. Your basic point in your, your safety in any contract situation is the people that you're contracting with. You need the trust of those people. That's what you're really relying on. My favorite safety net is if you find that you no longer trust them and you can't get along, you've got a quick out. Okay? And we've had plenty of contracts where we've had, you know, them go on for 10, 20 years. In fact, I think right now, or just to give you an example, the lawn cutting contract, that's been going on at least 20 years, same people. And they've had, I believe, the 30-day out on most of those contracts and yet no problems. Okay? This worries me. If they've got a economic thing, you'll see they can get out from under it, but we don't have that ability. So I can't recommend it, but that's up to you. That's my, that's my beef with it.
And they might not realize that it needs to be corrected because they didn't make any changes to that section in the contract. There was no redlining there. So it, that's how it is currently in the contract we have with them right now is how it reads.
That's how it was agreed last time?
Yes, because they didn't make any changes to that section.
And it was agreed last time, when?
We're in it with them right now.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
So a two-year contract?
It will be, it's supposed to be expiring December of this year, but with this change, it will renew it and then.
Commissioners, any questions, concerns, comments?
We want to.
Yes, Robert.
Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. To the, the question regarding fees and standardization, there's no real standardization that I've seen. It's all dependent on services and amenities in the particular building from when we've leased in the past as well as location and demand realistically. The fees that the county's charging with their lease agreements, we have a building down on the Austin Summit that we had acquired from another provider that we. that we utilize for public safety. And we have a tenant in there, Sky Fiber, and we've kind of mirrored, um, the fees that the county's charging for the rack and antenna spaces as well. So it's really dependent on what you want to set, um, for the particular location and the amenities you have.
Okay, thank you.
And they are changing it to a ten-year. Um, it used to be a three and they're asking for a ten-year agreement.
Which is also unusual, but the tradition is to not do it for longer than four years. Usually three.
Change it to, uh, with cause, well, with cause and ten years is like pretty good on their part, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, we have, uh, some advice from our counselors, so what do you guys want to do?
Brian, will you ask, does anybody on the line for this contract?
Is there anybody on the line that'd like to speak to item seventeen? Okay.
Well, I think that, um, it would be too much to ask for somebody in there to come here and represent us because if we want the thirty or sixty day out added or we don't, um, with anyone else, we don't go into that long of contracts. That, but without, we, one of the things that we kept standard that we could not go.
We do have some contracts, we have some that are thirty, we have some that are twenty-five, we have some that are five, we have some that are six. We do usually try to stay within the, the four years, but we do have contracts that are that extended.
But if our legal is suggesting that we have the thirty or the sixty day out, that would be one thing to make sure. And what page did you say that was on within this?
Um, it's, it's, um.
I had thirteen.
Yeah, I don't know, there's no page numbers on it, so apologize for that.
Yeah. It's fourteen on the, thirteen on the.
It's the, the page before, the signature page.
And it says either party, so what is the, that, um, because there's just said either party a con, con fault. And that's just saying.
But that's if there's a default.
I, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
I mean, you have the right to curate and all of that, which, you know, that's standard, that shouldn't be changed. What I'm suggesting is an additional time to get out for no use, any reason or no reason at all. The other thing though, keep in mind where this is and what it's for, it's up on the mountaintop. So it should also, you know, as to the sixty or ninety day out, weather permitting, you know, reasonable extension because of weather situations. Obviously, if you wanted to terminate it in December, it would be a problem.
And what does everyone else think about that? As far as the thirty or sixty day.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think, I mean, especially if they're asking for a ten-year, I think that we need a, because basically, within that time, we're negotiating a, a contract price. That price is going to be solid for ten years unless there's cause to get out of it. Which, and that's not, historically, that's not what we do with a contract, right?
Well, it, it does increase so much a year, as I said, but on the other hand, it's supply and demand and we're talking entirely different set of commissioners, so anywhere in between. Um, I think it would be nice to give them an out, or at least they can renegotiate for maybe a higher price if that's, because technology is different, it might go down, I mean, our price, so we don't know, so I agree.
So do we want to invite them back to discuss it with us? Do we want to offer them the terms that were acceptable to and see if they agree with it? And then we can have it read on and approve it next meeting, or how do you want to do it?
How about if we just ask, um, the staff to, uh, to contact them and see if they're agreeing to do something like that?
I emailed Heather, I've been in close contact with her, so she usually responds pretty quickly.
Okay, so we'll just, uh, we'll move on from this item and, and address it later on. Okay, so we'll move into item nineteen. Update the county commissioners and obtain direction as it relates to the Austin Realignment Project, also including recent developments with the State Division of Water Resources, NDEP, Bureau of Water Pollution Control, outline specific properties to be addressed, outlay total parcel master database and timelines. Morning, Eric.
Morning Commissioners, Erin Martinez, AM Engineering for the record. On the phone, I have our attorney group, uh, on the line and also my staff, Mr. L.K. Stevenson. Um, the commission took action on this item originally in, uh, February of twenty-two. The contract officially started May first of two thousand and twenty-two. The current status is, is we are ready to begin the recordation of the maps. We've set over eighteen hundred rebar on every, just about every property corner in the entire town. Due to that fieldwork, we've made some minor changes. The commission took action June twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-three to approve the merger re-subdivision map. Uh, with that action, we went to the state of Nevada, uh, as required by NRS, which yielded a few out of scope items. In the contract, we did not have in our scope to approach the state of Nevada Division of Water Resources or the, or the, uh, NDEP Bureau of Water Pollution Control. So you're probably asking yourself what the Division of Water Resources has to do with the survey project? Ultimately, tip, um, we had, um, let the county, uh, the county management and staff know from the very beginning that this item could be a potential problem. We were hoping to frankly dodge this issue by maybe getting some concurrence from the state to work with the county. Unfortunately, we are in a position where the state is requesting certain boxes to be checked off. And one of those boxes is that they are asking for a will serve letter for both sewer and water for the entire town of Austin. Including with that, they would like a water right allocation for the town of Austin parcel by parcel. In that meeting, um, and follow-up meetings, staff can attest that we, and my staff, dug our heels in very deep in these meetings. I feel like we represented Lander County very well with our attorney group. And what we held firm the entire time and to this day is that Lander County would be willing to will, would be willing to will serve the parcels that are currently being served. Where we absolutely found unacceptable is that we will not be recommending to Lander County to will serve any vacant land. And the example I like to give on vacant land is, is that we're not sure what's going to go there. So if you build a skyscraper, we don't have the infrastructure abilities to meet the skyscraper's development needs. So how could we will serve that parcel blanketly?
Erin, what is, when you say will serve, what's that mean?
So that means that the county will serve them sewer and water. It's a pretty standard, uh, letter that, uh, is, um, created and, and issued. Uh, when a subdivision comes into town, they work with the county to establish certain items. And then ultimately, when that subdivision is, is finally approved, things like water right allocations are, are completed. Things like a will serve letter for sewer and water are completed so that they meet all the current NRS requirements.
So let me ask you this, so if we, if we will serve vacant land, I'm assuming you have to put some sort of a, there has to be some sort of agreed amount, like what is, what will it be able to serve? And then locks that land into like, like you just said, if somebody wanted to come in and build a skyscraper, they wouldn't be able to do it because are you held accountable to what you will serve?
That's exactly right, and it's just not common. You do not, you do not will serve vacant land, because you just don't know what's going to go there. Um, and so with that, with follow-up meetings with our attorney group, I think that the vacant land is absolutely off the table. But now they are asking for a parcel by parcel listing with a water right allocation for that parcel. So some things you need to be aware of is currently Austin's, uh, water rights and the status of that is under an extension of time. So what that means is that's a standard application with, that most municipalities are under right now. And what that means is we have more water rights than we're utilizing. So there's two phases to that, you have the extension of time or proof of beneficial use. So if you were to file proof of beneficial use, like I think the Division of Water Resources was originally marching us down, then we would essentially count up all the parcels in Austin, allocate X amount of acre feet per parcel, and then whatever's remaining, Lander County would relinquish. Obviously, water for fighting, we're not recommending any relinquishment. And then also, you don't have any expansion abilities. Maybe your town grows, maybe it needs more water, you're left out in there to dry. So I think we've conveyed that fairly well. And what it's come down to now is the parcels that are currently being served by sewer and water, they would like the water right allocation for those specifically. So how we're orchestrating this is we'll continue to operate under our extension of time. We will not be recommending Lander County do a, uh, proof of beneficial usage. And so we will be issuing a, a spreadsheet for those parcels that are currently occupied. And we'll be allocating water rights with your direction for those specific parcels. Currently, right now, they're asking for two acre feet per parcel and we're going to be targeting one point one acre feet as a starting point. That equates to about a thousand gallons per day, which is a bit more than your typical residential usage. Um, studies show that that typical residential usage could be anywhere from a hundred gallons a day to about twelve hundred. So it's not completely out there, but it's, um, probably on the upper end of what's actually being utilized out there. Any, uh, questions before I move on from that? So this item is an out of scope of work item for my team. On this particular item, we're not asking for any additional funds. The, the attorney group, my team, we have went to the state, we have worked with them through and through. And so we're not asking for any compensation, uh, cost-wise for this item. Uh, all we're asking for is that you pause our project penalty component. And I can remind you exactly what that is, is a self-inflicted two-year project penalty. We're at eighty percent of the project, you recorded within two years. So we're asking that you pause that penalty as we work through this out of scope of item. Uh, the approval from the two oversighting agencies, again, Bureau of Water Pollution Control and Division of Water Resources, uh, their approval would be signified by signing the maps. Again, we're ready to start to record most of those maps. So, um, I think as soon as this water right issue gets solidified, um, you'll be seeing those maps coming to you for final approval. Okay, um, the other, uh, out of scope item is, and something that the commission does need to be aware of is, we originally proposed this project of three hundred and seventy parcels. There, I provide you a master, master parcel database. And that has been created from my team in conjunction with, uh, information provided from the assessor. And right now, there was quite a bit more parcels than expected. We've encountered over five hundred and sixty-five parcels. And again, I've provided that database to you. Within that database, we have excluded U.S. Forest Service parcels that, um, are either very small or, or outside of the town boundary. And, um, so with this database here, this is the maximum amount of parcels that we expect to, uh, encounter. And we're going to even probably reduce some of these parcels off of this list. There's a few on here that are like five square feet that we encountered, uh, that we'll probably remove from the list.
Bear with me.
So Erin.
Yes.
When you, when you take off the U.S. Forest Subs, the small ones, what are we looking at, you think, for the number of parcels?
Less than five hundred and sixty-five, uh, in that list, we've already excluded all the U.S. Forest Service parcels already. So if you look to the left of their item, it'll say excluded and the number does not, uh, account for them. So right now, the most you would receive is five hundred and sixty-five. Probably enough, somewhere around five hundred and sixty would be the final number of parcels. And outside of that, Commissioners, um, we're just looking for direction of one, uh, if you'd like us to continue to proceed with working with Division of Water Resources and NDEP to satisfy their requirements. So that's kind of item one. Item two is acknowledging this out of scope of work and the pausing of the project penalty if you so choose. And then the acceptance of the final master parcel database.
Well, I would, I would like to see them continue to work. I don't, I don't see a po, a problem in pausing the penalty because you are performing an out of scope service for, to Lander County, so I'd be fine with that. Um, yeah, so it's, I'm fine with it. How do you guys feel?
I'm fine.
Just so the commission's aware, the, the additional parcels, that does come contractually with additional. Correct. Just, I just want to make sure that we're all. Any questions? Or just give direction to continue on? Yeah, I think we're okay, everything that you stated, Erin, we're fine with and, uh, just continue on working with the water boys and, uh, and yeah, we won't, uh, won't penalize you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work on there.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, twenty-one, for discussion, review, consideration and possible action to approve, disapprove the reversion to acreage number twenty-three dash oh-one filed by Janet Rhodes to combine APNs zero, zero, three dash one, eight, one dash five, six, zero, zero, three dash one, eight, one dash fifty-eight into one point nine three acre parcel within R one, within an R one single-family residential zoning district. This was approved at the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting with the following conditions. One, add, uh, jurats?
Jurats.
Jurats.
Jurats to the map for the appropriate state agencies to sign the Mylar. Two, reversion to acreage to be recorded with the Lander County Recorder's Office within two years of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Hello there.
Hello, Shelby Knopp, uh, planning coordinator for the record. Um, so, uh, one addition, this does include another parcel number, which is zero, zero, three, one, eight, one, five, seven. So there's actually three parcels that are going to be combined into one. Uh, this is down in Kingston. Uh, Ms. Rhodes is placing a manufactured home on the parcels. Uh, so she just needed a little bit more room. She owns all three parcels, so just, she would just like to combine them. Uh, Planning Commission had, uh, no problems at their meeting and just recommended approval with the listed conditions.
Okay, so I don't have a problem with it. My only question would be that it wasn't agendaized for three parcels, are we okay to make a motion to include the three parcels?
You know, our backup included all of it, but it sort of depends how it's, how it's on agenda, yeah.
Was it in front of the Planning Commissioner?
How much is it going to lay in if we did it at the next meeting, I mean?
Um.
Going to really screw with them or just be a minor pull-up?
Well, just for, uh, to be completely honest, the house is already placed there. This was kind of an afterthought that we caught, we caught as they were building. Um, so I don't think it's going to hold anything up, it'll just be, the map gets recorded later.
And the Planning Commission approved the three parcels?
Yes, it was on their agenda that way.
I have a question on the state agencies to sign the Mylar. What, what state agencies are we talking about?
Um, so the way Kingston was, um, plotted was as a subdivision and the, uh, NDEP and the Division of Water Resources has to sign off on those maps. Um, and with the reversion to acreage, the way that that map is done, those also have to have all of the original signatures that the subdivision had. So that's why that has to be done that way. So this map will have to go in front of those state agencies to be approved as well.
We, we haven't ever done that, right?
I think so, yeah.
Kingston has been combining parcels for a long time.
Um, so just this surveyor chose to use this type of map, which is a reversion to acreage. I've done a little bit of research, usually they do a request to combine parcels and approved subdivision, which is a, a parcel map, which goes through a different process and that doesn't have to have those state signatures on it.
Yeah, because we've never had a Mylar before, that's why.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure our agenda is.
Yeah, that's up, that's, yeah, that's up to Bill if he.
Unmuted.
All right, guys.
This conference will now be recorded.
We'll get back to our meeting here, so we're tabling twenty-five, we're going to go to twenty-six. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the write-off of patient balances of uninsured, underinsured patients for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
Brandy Bingo for the record.
Hi, Brandy.
Hi. So this is, so once we got Dr. Will Court into the office, we saw a lot more patients. Um, with that, that just means that we also have bills that don't get paid that we have to write off. Um, they're not necessarily all uninsured. that we have to write off. Um, they're not necessarily all uninsured or underinsured. Um, I gave you guys some backup there, so it kind of gives you a layout of each insurance company and what they didn't pay. Medicaid is our primary underpayer. We've really ran into issues with Medicaid, so community health is considered a special clinic under Medicaid and just going through the hoops of learning how to bill them, like we're still doing that. Last year, we thought we had it settled, but they stopped paying us again. So we think it's better now, um, but we do have a lot of claims that they just didn't pay, so.
So the majority of that seventeen thousand is Medicaid?
A lot of it, ten thousand.
The others, uh, as far as individuals, do we just write them off or do we send them to collections?
We don't have a collections policy in place right now. Um, we can definitely look at that in the future. Our other majority was the self-pay, so those are the underinsured people who don't fit into the full write-off of our sliding fee scale and so they have a balance that they're responsible for, but they also don't pay that.
Well, I would definitely think that we probably want a collections policy, would you not? So that would probably be something that we definitely want to put in place, I think.
Okay.
Um, because it's just, then it's just a message that's like, oh, you don't have a payroll.
No, I agree.
Just go see the clinic.
I agree.
They, they don't do nothing about it.
Yep, I totally agree with that. And they're, yeah.
We are, we are on a sliding fee schedule for these people to begin with, right?
Yes, yeah, we do have a sliding fee scale for people who don't have insurance. Um, so that makes them, they provide copy of their income and stuff like that, but not everybody gets a full write-off on that. And so, um, I, Electronic Health Record has a collections agency built into it. I think they told us before, right?
I was just gonna ask, is that included in our-
It should be. So we'll reach out to them and ask them what that looks like moving forward.
And then the more we're doing it, we're getting familiar with Medicaid, they, the, the write-offs, I mean, we'll, we'll get better, more efficient at the system.
Yeah, I think that we're better with Medicaid right now, that we've gotten approval and we kicked back some, but these were ones just too late to be paid. And honestly, this was a big thing with our Electronic Health Record that we went with Athena. They just kept, Stacy would email them back and say, I've already talked to Medicaid, here's all the correspondence, this is what you need to do. And they'd come back and say, no, do that again. So she just went around the circle with them too long before they finally were like, oh, you were right, you knew what you were doing, so.
Uh, Athena is difficult.
Yeah.
Being on the hospital board, they are.
Yeah.
It is a difficult system, so.
It's really good on our end, but as far as billing goes, it's kind of a pain in the butt. But we're getting more efficient, um, and we will look into doing collections for those who don't pay their bills.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the write-off of patient balances of uninsured, underinsured patients for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
All right, a motion, second? I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
What's, what's the timeframe on this?
This is our fiscal year, so from July of last, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three right now.
July?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll move into item thirty. Um, Correspondents' Reports, future agenda items. Did everybody get to see the, uh, letter from Les Martin? Very nice letter?
Yes, it was very nice. It was a wonderful, uh, um, thanks for bringing that up. I was sitting on air to bring that up.
Yeah, no, it, uh-
It was a wonderful letter and much appreciated.
I have to say, I, uh, I, I leave out early in the morning to go walk via mountain and so I drive by the park and, cause I've never, like, at nighttime, I'm in my cave, right? And it's like, all the lights are on it, you're up on the hill, you're looking back, it's like, man, that mountain's a beautiful place and it's really come along the last few years, just looking really good. I was kind of proud, so.
He, he covered a lot. It really included everything in the whole county. It was beautiful up here.
Well, yeah, staff has done an awesome job.
I do have a question and I, I think it was sent to everybody. It's the, the letter that came from the Department of Sentencing, asking us for a representative. Do you remember that one?
I don't. It's not, it's not, it's not rattling right now. Did you get it a while ago? I got that letter a while ago.
Yeah, but we haven't done anything.
I think you forwarded it to him.
So we probably need to put it on an upcoming agenda.
I think so. Here, want to give this to? Bert, thank you. I think so. I don't think we've had a meeting since we got it, yes.
Okay, what was the date on that one?
This one is June twenty-first.
Yeah, see, I thought I had-
Twenty-three, but I don't know that, uh, it was shipped out then.
Anyway, so maybe we can get that on an upcoming agenda. We have to basically appoint one of our boards to, to that, right?
That's what they want, is a representative, yeah.
Yeah, we will add that to the upcoming agenda.
You can keep that, Bert, go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, any other agenda items, anybody see? We need to, agendaized or September meeting? That we're not going to have it, right?
No, we just canceled it.
Oh, we just canceled, so then, okay.
Yeah, it was a agendaized, now to cancel and then they'll publish, yeah. They'll put it in.
Then we have the, the contract issues for being get back on, which were, you know, we haven't worked on.
Yeah, I got all the tabled items.
And correction.
Okay, if there's no more on that.
I got a letter from Ira Hanson.
Yeah.
About the wild horses.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's offered, you know, the state of an emergency because he realizes that horses are not doing well, cause there's so a lot, we're five times over the amount of horses in, uh, Lander County than what the, the range can actually support. So we need to get something done there. I don't know if we can do anything or-
Um, we can add something to the next agenda to discuss that. I do have my records request into the BLM. They have not, um, responded back to that yet. I haven't got any documentation back. I did get all the documentation from Endo and, uh, and a bunch of pictures of their springs, but all of our records request, I believe, uh, um, USGS and BLM are the two that have not responded.
Did you see the copy of, of the letter that he's referring to?
I, I have not.
It had, yeah, all the resolutions from all the counties and-
Okay. Yeah, if I-
He's missing one, though. Pershing wasn't on there. And Wayne, Wayne Nebaker told me today that Pershing also did one.
Oh, Kelly Johnson.
Uh, a resolution and that wasn't included in Irish, but at least he's moving forward a bit.
Okay.
And then where are you with hiring the resource coordinator?
We are currently, uh, creating a job description form that will be back in front of you guys to approve.
Okay, anymore for correspondence, future agenda items reports? We'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Is there a public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Thanks, everybody.
This conference is no longer being recorded.